Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for a moment of silence for Susan Livingston, Sister to Donna McGowan, IA at the elementary school. Thank you. Open up the school committee meeting for February 10th, 2025. Motion to approve the bills.
Sumoed.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes from January 27th, 2025, school committee meeting?
Sumoed.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Upstain.
Thank you. Dr. Meyer, to you, please.
Yeah, so we have celebrations this meeting, so we're gonna start with high school principal Sirmac with his faculty and student of the month.
Start with the doctor of the month, I'd like to invite Mrs. Katherine Donzback. I'm gonna read something that was written by students that nominated Ms. Donzback for staff member of the month. Ms. Donzback is one of the advisors for the No Place For Hate group at CHS, and she plays such an important role in making our school in a more inclusive and supportive place. She helps lead discussions, advises students on important topics, and even presents lessons to staff so they can bring no place to hate to their classrooms. Beyond all of that, Ms. Donzback is a kind teacher who truly connects with her students. She meets us where we are, always making sure we feel heard and supported. She's known for being approachable and always willing to help, which make her classroom a space where students feel comfortable and valued. One student even shared how grateful they were for her guidance, saying she had a huge impact on their life. Ms. Donzback, Ms. Donzback's dedication to her students and commitment to make CHS a better place make her deserving of this recognition. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I next like to have Maurice Tessa from the middle school. Maurice was nominated as student of the month by a faculty. Maurice, since joining CHS in November 2023, Maurice has shown outstanding motivation in both his academics and extracurricular activities, particularly through his involvement in the Excel Club. His dedication and positive attitude have been consistently recognized by the Excel Club advisor and other staff members, who commend his strong work ethic and willingness to help others. Maurice's teachers highlight his impressive academic performance, marked by excellent effort and high grades, demonstrating his commitment to learning. His enthusiasm to become a member of the National Society further reflects his drive for excellence. Additionally, his readiness to assist peers and staff, both before and after school, enhance his character and leadership. Maurice is deserving of this recognition. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Congratulations.
And then Principal Staffy will be next for the middle school.
Good evening, everybody. Miss Moran, come on up here. Miss Moran wears many hats at Clinton Middle School. She's an energetic teacher, she's a supportive colleague, and a knowledgeable department head. Her colleagues describe her as fun, smart, and always helpful. Just recently, Miss Moran completed the incredibly important task of leading her department and the entire school in access testing for our English learners. As a principal, I find Kate to be a hugely positive presence in the building, and one who always steps up unquestionably for whatever is best for CMS students. She's open-minded, supportive, and incredibly dependable.
Congratulations.
Doctor Meyer, the next student that we're gonna honor this evening came in a full Eagles regalia. Now, I know you're a Steelers person, so we just push on forward. Might as well be the other side of it. We just push on forward. David, come on up.
David is the definition of a model student at the fifth grade at Clinton Middle School. He comes to school with a smile on his face and spends his day finding ways to help teachers and his friends. He's friendly with everyone, and his behavior is exceptional. He's dedicated to his academics, and he works hard on everything he sets his mind to. David is a wonderfully well-rounded individual, and his teachers are so excited to see where he goes in life, because we know, they know, your teachers know for sure, you will go very, very far. Congratulations.
During World War II, Steelers and Eagles combined to form the Steagles.
Congratulations.
All right, Chloe, come on up here, will ya?
Chloe, look at this first student your teachers wrote for me. Chloe is a dream student. Chloe is a dream student who's always trying to better herself. She always has a smile on her face. She's involved in many extracurricular activities, and won at the local and district level for the Patriots PEN essay contest. Her essay is now one of ten left in the state. She's very supportive of her peers, helping those who may all, and always helping those who may be struggling. Overall, Chloe is an extremely positive role model academically and socially at the middle school. Congratulations.
And now Principal Sylvia for our elementary recipients.
All right, can I invite our school nurses up? I have Maggie, Kathy, Small, and Lillian to lobby. These three were nominated several times by staff at the elementary school, and I am happy to recognize all three of them. They have consistently demonstrated exceptional care for our students and staff. Throughout this germ season, our nurses have been at the forefront of managing a busy nurse's office with patience and skill. As many of you know, this time of year can be particularly challenging with students coming in from all directions, dealing with fevers, stomach aches, and a range of medical conditions, including the acute seizures. Have you done that before? But Kathy, Megan, and Lillian have not only handled these challenges, they've done so with kindness, compassion, and a level of care that is indescribable and goes above and beyond. What truly stands out is how they care for every student regardless of the ailment. The simple act of offering some TLC to a child in need, they are always there. They manage the busy office and the hectic environment of the nurse's office while ensuring each child feels seen, heard, and cared for. We also know that some of our youngest learners may feel nervous about visiting the school doctor, often fearing that a trip might mean they're getting a shot or some sort of procedure. Kathy, Megan, and Lillian have all taken time to explain their tools and show students what's going on to help ease their worries. Their patience and care create an environment where students feel safe and supported, no matter the reason for their visit. It's clear with the overwhelming nominations that you have received over the course of the last several months, that these nurses are deeply appreciated, not only for their professional skills, but for the genuine compassion they bring to their work every single day. I want to say thank you to the three of you for your incredible contributions to CES and the care that you provide. We're fortunate to have all of you.
And this way, please. I think that's it, no more, right?
No more. Show's over.
All right, maybe one more.
Come on up, Rory. I do have to make a public apology. She said she would only come up here if I was dressed in a penguin costume, so I think if it's in the root, it's in the fruit. And of course, I'm wearing a penguin costume a little bit. All right, so she forgives me, though, but I have to wear it on Valentine's Day all day with heart sunglasses. All right. Tonight, we are recognizing a very special student, Rory O'Malley, who has been nominated for student of the month. This nomination comes from the nurses and a staff member who have witnessed her remarkable growth, both academically and personally. At the elementary school, we strive to educate the whole child, and Rory is a shining example of that. When most children come to Clinton Elementary School, they focus on developing foundational skills, but for Rory, her journey has been something more. From the very beginning, Rory partnered with our school to learn how to manage and care for her health, something not every student faces at such a young age. What's truly inspiring is how Rory has taken this challenge and transformed it into an opportunity for growth. This school year, she has made incredible strides in not only understanding how to manage her diagnosis, but also managing her health with maturity and confidence. These accomplishments are impressive on their own, but they are only part of her story. Along with her progress in self-care, Rory has blossomed into a more confident and self-assured learner. She advocates herself, and she's becoming more outgoing and comfortable in her own skin, letting her vibrant and sassy, I call her sassy, personality shine through. The strength and resilience she has shown, both inside and outside of the classroom, is truly inspiring. Rory's progress is a testament to her hard work, determination, and the support of her school village, which is made up of her teachers, her family, the nurses, and everyone that has helped her along the way. We are so proud of how far she has come, and we are excited to see how far she will go. Congratulations, Rory.
All right. That's right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations. All right. Well, that is all of our recipients tonight.
Congratulations to all that won their awards this evening. We would invite you to stay for our meeting, because it's very exciting, cutting-edge type of stuff. We want to be informed on some of the cool things we're gonna talk about tonight, but we will not be offended if you choose to go take some pictures out in the hallway, and we'll get the rest of our meeting going. So congratulations to all of you.
Squawk, nice outfit. Now you guys are like, now I get back to my comfortable spot. All these people encroaching on my meeting spot. Do we have a student representative?
Michael's here. Right. Do we have any public comment this evening? Anything from the CTA this evening? Anything from the PTA this evening? Never miss that opportunity, right?
Any opportunity is a good opportunity. I will take it.
I'm ready to sign up to call bingo, so let's make it happen.
Tina and I are ready to come back.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, so we made it. Yay. We went to 145 members, so we gained another member after our snowball dance, which is exciting. We are the charity of the month at Shaw's for the February reusable bag fundraiser, so every bag they sell, we get a dollar out of that. Applications for scholarship are open for high school seniors. If there are students who are interested in the scholarship application, there is a volunteer requirement. Any of their years while they're in high school, they can volunteer for PTA at dances or book fairs or bingo, and that's a qualification for that. Teachers requesting funds for field trips should plan to attend the March 6th meeting. Our February meeting was virtual, so we did not have any requests at that meeting. Family Bingo is our next big event on Friday, March 14th, at Clinton Middle School. We will be in touch about celebrity game callers, don't worry. The wish lists and volunteer opportunities are posted on the website, and we sent out 150 sponsorship letters this month so far for requests for monetary donations as well as gift cards. The Bingo Grade Challenge, which helps raise funds and offers a fun prize for each of the grades, is gonna kick off in the next week and a half. Thank you so much to the administration at each of the schools who's helped us to decide on fun prizes. We will have a pie toss at a teacher or administrator at CES, a dunk tank at Clinton Middle School, and grab-and-go breakfast at the high school. In the tradition of many hands make light work, here's my ask to the board tonight, that we'd love to have you help support the high school grades in their grade challenge. Minimum donation is $2. There's a form here that you can fill out. There's an envelope to return it, there's no pressure for you to do it right now. And I'd also like to ask you to hand out this sponsorship letter to one of your favorite local businesses to help us to get some additional support over the next couple weeks. And our website is on pages of everything that you've seen. If you need anything, or looking for something fun to do on March 14th, you know where to find us.
So I heard pie throw at the elementary school.
Yeah.
I heard dunk tank at the middle school.
Yeah.
And Principal Sirmac's not signing up for anybody to embarrass him, that he's gonna get breakfast?
And now that's public knowledge.
Sure, really? Haircut, like fuzz cut?
Oh, there you go, no throwing down the gauntlet.
You give him some ideas.
It turned out the students really liked the grab-and-go breakfast.
All right. Listen, children likes to eat too, that's fine.
Thank you. All right, and we're glad to see you back this time.
Thanks.
Just in time to get an ask.
Good to be back.
All right, thank you so much.
Anything from CPAC or ALPAC? Okay. Back over to you, Dr. Meyer.
All right, so we have the two things from the strategic plan there, social, emotional, and physical wellness, and community engagement. As a reminder, we just kinda like to keep looking at these and make sure that we're making some progress and remembering what we said in those plans. I think one of the ones, social, emotional, and physical wellness, that you kinda heard about tonight a little bit, was sort of like the No Place For Hate. I mentioned that, I think that's one that we're kinda, we're going with. Obviously, we're still continuing the safety committee. I think we have upcoming sort of training this week at the middle school, and then we'll have another meeting in March. Community engagement, one of the ones that we, in here, was one of the strategies actually to work on developing the Title I Parent Involvement Policy in School Parent Compact, which we talked about at the last meeting, at the tri-council meeting, and continuing with the Family Outreach Center. The one piece, one sort of thing I included here with this was this handout that says K-12 schools are obligated to protect all students and their information. This is something that, obviously, you know, I think it's, it seems to be, I think some of the initial concerns seem to be leveling off a little bit, but I know that there was some, lot of questions that we faced when there were some changes to the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement about removing school as a, as one of the kind of like protected spaces. This was actually a flyer. I sent it out to parents. It really wasn't intended for parents, it's intended for schools, just to remind us, it came from the Attorney General's Office. But we're just trying to set people's minds at ease that, you know, we're going to, all students are entitled to a free public education, and that we need to protect student rights. So we were following the guidance that the Attorney General posted, and we will continue to do so, which essentially, like we mentioned last meeting, is really the same guidance we would use if anyone from any agency came and said, you know, "I need to see a student." Well, the first thing we're gonna do is try to verify what legal grounds they might have to do that, and if that means sending it to our attorney, we're gonna do that. So I think everyone would hope that we're doing that if it was their students. So just trying to make sure we're following that process. All right, after that, the next thing I have up here is the 25-26 school year. We did a response, we did a survey of the staff, because I know that we got some initial straw poll feedback from the CTA. It was almost two to one that the staff were in favor of the two-week holiday break, like we did this year. And actually, it really was one that probably had more preferred by sort of the administrative team as well. So in your calendar, in your packet after the survey, you have a draft version from February 10th. This is the one I'm recommending for adoption. It has the two-week vacation in December. Also, we included a couple things on here. If you remember, this year, we voted to sort of cancel preschool on two days in March. We've actually included that on the calendar, the 9th and the 16th, as no pre-K classes, and that still allows us to do our screenings for next year. And we actually have the last day for pre-K and K, the tentative last day for pre-K and K on the calendar already, too, is the 8th. I know that's something that kinda comes up every year. We kinda usually sort of wait till we see the snow, but at least we'll get the tentative one on here, and we can adjust from there. So if you are comfortable with this calendar as presented, we could approve it. I think we've already brought it forward as a draft form. If there's any changes or any discussion or concerns with it, we can try again.
Make a motion to approve the calendar as presented by Dr. Meyer.
I'll second.
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Upstain. Very good. Thank you.
All right, career and technical education partnerships. So just a couple updates on some things. The first one, so as a follow-up, we talked at the last meeting that Chair Verakis and I went and visited Lester High School, where they are expanding their career and technical education programs on the former campus of the Becker College in Lester, and where they've actually moved the high school. So we tried to do a survey of the middle school students. I sent the survey on Monday, February 3rd. These were the results as of February 7th. So we sent to 571 student contacts, 929 email addresses, and we got 39 responses. Seems like a low response rate, but a lot of parents who might not be, if they know their students aren't interested, they might just opted not to fill it out. Basically, what it shows is that in eighth grade, we had 10 responses, five saying yes they're interested, five saying they're unsure, three definitely saying they'd like to attend, they're interested in attending Lester, seven saying unsure they'd like to learn more. So, you know, it looked like there was decent interest in there, about, you know, pretty consistent around 10 or 12. Obviously, less than fifth grade, some interest in the Lester campus. We got a breakdown down there of some of the trades that they were looking at, with, I believe, electrical seemed to be the most popular one. So the, so with that, I shared this information with the superintendent, Lester, and you can see the, behind the summary is the actual survey that went out. And then after that, there's one that says draft, February 10th, is a draft memorandum of agreement that would be between Lester and Clinton to make a preferred vocational partnership. So essentially, it would mean that students would be, if, basically, if they, if they offer the shop, they're supposed to be going there. They'd still be able to do something else if it was a shop, a trade that they could get accepted to somewhere else that wasn't offered at Lester, but if they, let's say, if Lester has culinary arts, and you want to go to culinary arts, then you would have to apply to Lester, which they do have all culinary arts. So this is a, this agreement is modeled after the agreement that they did with Shrewsbury. So it's basically verbatim with Clinton swapped in for Shrewsbury. So the, it's a three-year agreement, and we can, either party may opt to discontinue the agreement at 12 months. So basically, year to year, you could always, if it's not working, we could opt out. So I don't know, we don't necessarily have to have one of these to offer this, because they're willing to accept our students. It just kinda solidifies more of an attempt at a partnership, so I don't know if it's something that the school committee is ready to enter into a formal agreement like this at this time, or if they want some more information.
This would take effect the next count, in the next school year?
Yeah, they would start doing some recruiting now for students who could apply for the fall, yeah.
How does their rate compare to ASVAB? I saw the 13,000.
It's less.
It's less than ASVAB.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's in the, I think ASVAB's getting closer to like 17, right around there, this is 13.
And then, I don't know if it's just a typo in section four, but I see Tantascqua High School. Did they need to write Clinton there?
No, so...
Or is that like a comparable high school they're comparing a fee or something?
Yes, so Tantascqua High School is a comprehensive high school that offers vocational schools, right? So the state, when those, these rates, these tuition rates they set, have to be approved by the state. So what they said is the comp that they're using to set their rate is Tantascqua. So that's what they're, that's what they're, so like if, so if Tantascqua's, if for FY26, let's say the state said Tantascqua can go to 14.2, then we would use 14.2, because that's the rate we would use, yeah.
No, I think this is a great opportunity for our students to have that, the vocational education opportunity that was, you know, kind of lacking because of ASVAB. So I think it's a great idea.
Well, I entertain a motion. Thank you. Second. Any discussion? I think it's a great opportunity as well. It was a great tour. Looking forward to learning more and having info sessions for parents. I think the more information that they receive, it'll probably just lead to more people being more interested, so thanks for getting us up there, Dr. Meyer, and let's see where it goes.
Great.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right, so I will send this to, I'll let the superintendent, Lester, know that we've approved this. I think he's bringing it to his board. I'll see what he wants to do. If we want to send a signed copy to him in advance, I think he's got a meeting, I think it's the week after vacation is his next meeting. So we're kind of ahead of them in the process, and at the same time, we'll try to maybe start getting some dates on the calendar for when they might come do an info session, and when we might look to do a field trip, and when we would want applications due to them and that kind of stuff. All right, the next one is just, there's another one I put under here called Peterson School Dual Enrollment. There's sort of another presentation that you'll see here. The Peterson School, which is, has a Worcester campus, has started doing some... The Peterson School, which is, has a Worcester campus, has started doing some, like dual-enrollment type programs with some high schools. The difference, I'd say, is that they're not, whereas a, where like a CTE high school program, a Chapter 74 program in the state, they're going to provide, you know, it's structured around your core academics, your vocational training, and they're going to provide sort of that field experience and everything, where the Peterson School really is just going to give you a couple of those like basic trade courses, and they're not necessarily going to do the, like the placement or anything like that to kind of get you that field experience. They said a lot of people end up getting it because a lot of people are looking for help, and they know that that's a place to find it, or you get connections through the class. But at least, it's a program where they've been starting to allow people to take, usually their junior year, they take like a 15-week course in either plumbing or electric are the main ones they do with high school kids, and then they do a full-year course, their senior year, in like plumbing or electric. And then there's a couple of different options, that there, it could be one day a week, it could be two nights a week, that kind of stuff. So, we've talked about it at the, Principal Sermack and I met with the Peterson School, get that information. So, it's something that we want to make sure that we're making available to any of our students this year, make sure that they're aware of it, and then we'll kind of see, we'll kind of gauge the interest. But we're kind of hitting that wave right now of like those students who might be benefiting from this as juniors and seniors, were kind of like the ones that couldn't get into AsaBET. So, if this is something that might, might help them, and then we can see how that would work. So, there's some different scenarios that we've talked about as far as how to accommodate this in their coursework and how to look at it from sort of a financial aspect and those types of things. But, so there's nothing really, I think, that we need to formally vote on or anything. I just want you guys to be aware that it's another, it is another school that we've met with to look at it. The difference would be if a student was doing this, it would be a dual enrollment, where they don't be going like one day a week or two nights a week. So, they would still kind of be connected to Clinton High School, they'd still be doing their core academics here, they'd be doing all that kind of stuff. All right?
One question I did have, and it goes back to the Lester one, too. As far as transportation goes, if a child chooses to...
So, we, I, next, we have two buses typically in our contract for vocational transportation. We are to the point where we only need one to AsaBET. So, what we, the plan would be to redirect one to Lester. Yep. All right. CMS building project, did I put something in here? I can't remember. I don't think so, did I? No, okay. So, just that the, I wasn't sure if I put the agenda in or whatever, but the next meeting for the building project is February 11th. Where they are right now, they're just kind of working through the town process as we get ready to, I think actually, one of the early release bid packages went out already. And then I think there's another one coming out in March. I think the first one that went out, though, was something like elevators or something, because it always ends up going out twice, or something like that. But the, I think that we've, they've already went to the Conservation Commission. There was no finding from the Conservation Commission, which is good, and they've been having their hearing with the planning board, and the planning board actually engages with a peer reviewer to kind of look at everything. And I know they had a few questions to answer, to respond to for the planning board for their March meeting, but most of it was not significant regarding the plans. It was more just sort of the site work and making sure that they're going to be sort of respectful to the neighbors during the construction process and how that would play out. So, we're hoping that that can stay on track. And then, once we get the planning, we're done with the planning board, we can move forward with National Grid to get the electric coming in, for the temporary electric, for the, get that ball rolling, because National Grid will take a little while, so we can make sure that the temporary electric is ready for when they go. And like I said, they'll start doing prequalifications and everything soon, and the goal is to be off and running with construction as soon as school's out. So, it'll become real soon, yeah.
It's great.
Awesome.
All right, and then there are two, three, four, five, six policies that we have in here. These policies were all brought forward last meeting for a first reading. We kind of went through them. Some of them were just sort of updates. A couple were either new or changed. We approved them all for a first reading. Now would be the time to see if there's any other comments or concerns, and then if you're comfortable with them, you can approve them for adoption.
Short comment I have is that I was here for most of these when they were first adopted, December 12, 1995. Brings back some fond memories.
I entertain a motion for the policies to be approved, or to be discussed.
I think a motion to approve them is, I'm not reading them all out, but one that's listed here.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Very much.
And I guess one more clarification is, one of the ones we just approved was the graduation policy that developed our local, clarified our local comp student termination for right now. We did have a meeting with the commissioner, and it just did remind us that they are still working on what that might mean long-term. So, while we needed to get something in place now, immediately for the class 2025, it is something we might end up revisiting either over the summer or next year, whenever the state comes out with additional guidance. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Under Advisory Committee, Stewie, have updates on upcoming meetings? I know marketing is the 10th.
And we're meeting on the 10th as well, right?
Correct, so that'll be before the school committee.
Yeah, that one wasn't on there. So, marketing's on the 10th, and there is a school committee on the 10th. I know it wasn't on that reminder list, but it always gets confusing with the, February and March days always being the same, you feel like.
They're always the same, yeah.
The Safety Committee meeting, I don't know if that, Safety Committee, the next